All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Um, before we do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, you'll notice that I'm not the mayor. Um, the mayor is in Dubai at the UN Climate Change Conference. Um, she may be online as well tonight. Um, it's just as awkward for me to be called Mr. Mayor as it is for you to say it for the staff. Um, but that's just kind of how the the protocols uh go. Um, and with that, we'll do the moment of silence and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it came. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Annie Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sed.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
All right, item number four is a request for approval for the city council minutes on November twenty eighth.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move approval of the city council minutes from the regular day meeting of November twenty eighth.
Second.
Got a motion and second, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Um, we don't have any uh items on special business, so the next step is the consent agenda. All items with an asterix are considered to be routine by council and will be acted enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless unless on these items unless a council member or citizen. So requests in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We have had a citizen's sole request, so I'd last I'd ask unanimous consent that we pull SUB twenty three zero 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 two four from the consent agenda. And because it requires public testimony, we'll move it to new business public hearings.
Without objection.
Mr. Mayor, with that removal, I uh move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Um, and just a a quick note before we jump into the ordinances, we do have Mayor McLean um online all the way from Dubai as well, so welcome there. Which makes
Good morning.
Makes it even more awkward for me for when you say Mr. Mayor. Um, we don't have any items on the first reading ordinance, but we do have one item on the second.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances, the one ordinance on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed to the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD dash forty two dash twenty three, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title ten, Chapter five, Section ten dash five dash seven to amend local limits and Section ten dash five dash nineteen to add a new subsection ten dash five dash nineteen dash one on electronic reporting and renumber the remaining subsections accordingly. Approving a survey of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
All right, we've got one item on third reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that further reading of ORD forty one twenty three be dispensed with and the record reflect that if you read third time in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD dash forty one dash twenty three, an ordinance CAR twenty one dash forty five for property located at ninety four seventy four and ninety six fifty West State Street. Amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in Section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights away from R dash one A, single family residential, two point one units per acre to R dash three D slash DA, multiple family residential with design review and development agreement. Setting forth a reason statement supports the zone change and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that ORD forty one twenty three be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? I think so. Um, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And then we've got one item, a big one, um, on first, second, and third reading.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. I move that all rules of the council interfering with the immediate consideration of ORD forty three twenty three be suspended and that the portions of Idaho Code five zero fifty dash nine zero two requiring an ordinance be read on three different days twice by uh title and once in full be dispensed with and the record show that it has been read the third time in full.
Second.
Um, we've got a motion and a second, and there's a chance there will be some discussion, but let's save it for the um, the approval motion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD dash forty three dash twenty three, an ordinance ZAOA twenty three dash two, amending Title eleven Boise City Code Development Code to correct spelling and grammar errors and inconsistencies and provide clarifications. Amending Title eleven, Chapter four, Section three point seven to clarify sustainability and affordability incentives. Amending Title eleven, Chapter three, Section three point one to clarify that use specific standards may be modified through the conditional use process. Amending Title eleven, Chapter four, Section nine point three E to reorganize and clarify water conservation as they're escaping standards. Amending Title eleven, Chapter five, Section three point six to clarify qualifications for hearing examiner. Amending Title eleven to ensure consistency between zoning compliance and zoning certificate review processes throughout the code. Amending Title eleven, Table eleven dash three point one to modify use allowances for adult or child daycare facilities in certain zoning districts. Amending Title eleven, Chapter three, Section three point two to clarify use specific standards for adult or child daycare home occupation. Amending Title eleven, Table eleven dash two point one to include MXH zoning district. Amending Title eleven, Table eleven dash four point one to clarify processes for development standards compliance thresholds. Amending Title eleven, Chapter four, Section nine point five to reorder provisions regarding lot buffers between different land uses. Amending Title eleven, Table eleven dash four point three to modify front setbacks in certain MX zoning districts. Approving a survey of the ordinance, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. This is something of an honor, I move that ORD forty three twenty three be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, um, I think there probably will be some discussion here. Uh, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to kick it off and then maybe um, Council President that made the motion.
No, I'd say you guys start and I'll um, I'll go from there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is the the zoning code. Tried, tested, tweaked with typo corrections and small updates to reflect cross references and all of the little details that a hundreds and hundreds of page document needs to be tidied up. Um, I was in here last week and saw our city staff the day before uh, the code was implemented on on December first working uh, literally around the clock, uh, around the clock through the night to update our IT systems to go through the code, to train on the policies and procedures and how we'd be handling things. And one of the things that became immediately apparent to me was that although this was years and years of work by hundreds of people with input from thousands of people and we just crossed a major uh, a a major milestone by passing it and cleaning it up and finalizing it. It's not over, um, we're gonna have to have review processes, we're all gonna have to learn how to implement it and work with it. And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank everybody who contributed, but especially right now, the city staff who are in the middle of it um, and continuing to work their tails off to make this as smooth and efficient and usable for the public who created it and who it's designed to serve, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sted.
I'll just kind of reiterate some of what we heard last week and that, you know, we're not gonna see, this is a, this is a work in progress, so we, I look forward to seeing it implemented, seeing um, how it changes our city, being sure that that's done in a way that we're um, that is hitting expectations, and if not, we have that review process. Um, additionally, though, it might be eighteen months before we really start to see projects under this new code um, being built. So I think that there is gonna be some patience kind of on all sides as we navigate this, patience with our staff um, as it's new to them too through this process. Um, and then also just patience in seeing what, you know, that likely what's happening in your neighborhood this month and maybe even next year is still based on the old code, so it's gonna take us some time to get there, but I look forward to um, to seeing us get there.
Anyone else? Um, I would just comment, I was uh, had the pleasure of being there with Councilmember Bajin as well, and it seemed like a pretty special moment. Um, just because there was all the work that was leading into it, and I think it's really important to celebrate milestones um, because it doesn't necessarily mean like the work is over, but it means like you get to celebrate all the work that's been done at this phase and kind of get to move into that second phase. And what was happening while we were here, um, besides just dropping off some some cookies and pizza um, is that the staff was actually going through real applications um, in the new zoning code and trying to figure out where there might be some kinks and trying to figure out things every single step of the way. Um, like Councilmember Bajin said, there were folks here till late at night that night still working on getting it uploaded to the website, getting everything ready to go, and then spending the next few days still trying stuff out to the point where we actually got to make it go live on Monday. And on Monday, I think that we maybe had seventeen um, seventeen submittals, usually I think we get about nine or so um, over the course of a month, so it was a big day, people are willing to use this, maybe those aren't right at all, um, but people are using it. Um, and it will need to be, you know, updated, we we will need to figure those kinks out, but I hope our staff that have worked on it so hard got to go home that day and realized that they had done something once in a lifetime um, that most folks don't get to do and that it will have an impact um, on our community for for years and years to come. So again, thank you for everyone in the process, but our staff who are continuing to work through this, but celebrate that moment that you had um, this last week, it's it's a really, really big deal. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, um, you know, this is actually why I wanted to jump on for this meeting was was this topic because this is a big deal, I really appreciate all the work that our council member, our council did a couple weeks ago um, to look at the updates and work with staff to update it where needed. Um, and and I deeply, deeply am grateful to our team at the city of Boise that helped make this possible. You know, we've talked a lot about this um, over the course of the last four years and and especially over the course of the last um, six months. And I continue to reflect on how many people made this code, and it's it was made by um, the staff that worked so hard to get it to the finish line in April and June, and then again today, it was created by our residents who um, you know, showed up to testify, showed up to give feedback and submitted surveys, talked with our staff, um, shared their visions of of our neighborhoods um, and ultimately of our city. And in just a couple hours, I'm gonna be talking about this um, on a panel um, that focuses on land use and the impact that cities can have in making sure that our communities are ready for the future and while ensuring that not only we're ready for the future, but that our neighborhoods are vibrant and that folks have access to opportunities and they can connect with each other in a changing world. Um, and this, this is what this code does, it's so much more than the the pages and the rules, but it's really a reflection um, of of the dreams and hopes and and loves of our residents and the city um, and the tools that we need to ensure that as we continue to grow, we keep Boise um, the Boise that we love um, and which is based on the people and the vibrancy and connection of our neighborhoods. So this has been a ton of work to change a whole system um, since passage to get this ready um, to go is huge lift, and I don't know if it was the Council President or Mr. Mayor tonight that said um, that this was truly a once in a lifetime opportunity for our staff um, to shape the the city that they love um, and each and every one of us to have a part of it as well as every resident that took part in. Um, it's an exciting day, um, lots of work behind us, but yes, lots of work ahead because as Councilmember Sted said uh, we will continue to look at this, to continue to see what needs to be um, tweaked and fixed and improved to make sure that we're getting what all of us want to get out of this, um, and that's a, you know, a safe and welcoming um, and vibrant and connected city for each and every one of us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for um, leading us through this. Uh, with that, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next we're on to new business, I just want to do a quick check here, do we have any folks that are here for the um, filmography? One, okay, cool, um, we didn't know if we'd have folks in, we're just gonna um, see this in normal order, it'll go filmography and then it will go the item that uh, Councilmember Bajin pulled off the consent agenda. Now, we'll do that at the end, yep. So we'll just keep that normal order with um, the item off the consent agenda um, at the very end, and that means that our first one is um, CPA twenty three dash oh six and CAR twenty three oh thirteen, Micron Technology, a comprehensive plan use map amendment um, and a request for annexation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, before we get started, I'm going to recuse from this item uh, because of the work that I put in on this item on planning and zoning.
Great, all right, thank you, Councilmember Sted. I think we have got Delaney.
Yep. Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is a request for a comprehensive planned land use map amendment and annexation. The subject properties are located within the southeast planning area surrounded by mostly undeveloped land near large industrial sites also near existing rural low density. To the west is the Iseman Interchange, north is the existing Micron Campus and to the northeast is the Rush Valley, Sunny Ridge and Painted Ridge Residential subdivisions. The applicant proposes an amendment to the comprehensive plan uh, future land use map to add five hundred and seventeen acres of property with an industrial land use designation and an additional seventy nine acres of property with a planned community land use designation. The primary purpose of these applications is to bring additional land contiguous to the current Micron Campus and the city limits uh, to bring in for future support for upcoming construction activities and future campus expansion. The seventy nine acre parcel is contiguous with the city's current planned community designation and brings the, and this brings all the land owned by Micron within the city's comprehensive planning area, which will allow for future annexation. As a component of this application, Micron is also requesting the city work with Ada County to renegotiate the city's area of impact boundary to be consistent with the proposed land use map amendment change. As shown on your screen, the existing annex parcels are shown in purple. The hashed area is the current area of impact. The solid green line will show the existing boundary. The dash green line shows a proposed renegotiated boundary with Ada County, which would include these Micron parcels. Also included with this request is an annexation for five hundred and seventeen acres with a T two D DA technological manufacturing with designer view and development agreement zone. These parcels are currently zoned RP, Rural Preservation, within Ada County. The subject area is proposed as industrial land use with the associated CPA. The annexation area is contiguous to the current Boise City Limits and the existing Micron Campus. In addition with this application, there is a proposal for a modification to the existing development agreement. This would add the annexation area and update the internal peripheral concept plans to the existing DA. No additional revisions to the previous approvals are being proposed. Uh, the intent with this is to simplify future planning and development processes on the Micron Campus by having a single development agreement that covers the entire site. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval and the motion needed this evening is a final decision for the comprehensive plan amendment annexation and the development agreement modification, I'll stand for any questions.
Great, do we have any questions for staff on this one?
Madam Mayor. But, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, I just, I just don't know how it works, so um, when we go to adjust the area of impact, Micron has asked that we work with the county to do that, I, can you just walk through what that process actually is, I don't, we don't do it and I don't know what it is.
Yeah, absolutely, um, Councilmember Bajin, so for this process, uh, the request came in from Micron in order for us to um, fully execute on the annexation, we need to adjust our boundary of area of impact. That is a request that the city makes with Ada County that is currently in the works right now, so we made a formal memo request to the Ada County. They verbally agreed and now they're moving through a hearing process as well. So through their hearing process, they will officially um, approve that boundary adjustment and there'll probably be some ordinance readings, but in the time being, we're gonna get this annexation uh, looked at and then we'll hold off on ordinances until that boundary is um, negotiated.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll have the applicant come up, I think we've got Debra Nelson, Debra, it's good to see ya.
Well, while the presentation's pulling up, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I also have with me tonight, I'll start with Debra Nelson, six oh one West Banix Street in Boise, and I have with me tonight Marcos Ramirez from Micron, who's also available to answer any questions you have. Um, we really don't have anything new to present beyond what was in uh, Delaney's presentation, so I'll run through it quickly and just give you the opportunity to to ask questions about any of these applications. Um, first of all, just want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Delaney and Crystal and their entire team. This has been a um, a larger project than you can see obviously just from this one um, set of applications and a lot of work has gone in um, on the city side to assist Micron as they work through this um, process and we appreciate all of that work. A little bit of history, um, almost exactly one year ago on December sixth, two thousand twenty two, we were before this body to ask for annexation of three hundred and sixty acres uh, just to the north of the current application sites. And that was to facilitate Micron's planned fifteen billion dollar investment um, in additional manufacturing uh, in semiconductor and chips on this location. Uh, they have chosen this site to for expansion based on the long history of relationship between Micron and the city and the shared vision that they have with the city. Um, the new expansion will include a state of the art semiconductor fabrication facility called the Fab along with supporting office and utility buildings. The Fab and associated buildings are expected to create an additional two thousand new jobs and support indirectly seventeen thousand new jobs in the area. Um, so a very exciting project and this is just south of that area and just wanted to provide that context. So tonight, as Delaney outlined, we've got three applications um, to take up in sequence, the comprehensive plan amendment to add to new areas, the annexation of just one of those areas, the five hundred and seventeen acre area that's adjacent and a request to modify the existing Micron Campus Development Agreement that was put in place with the prior annexation, just so that we can add this new property and align it with the internal and peripheral areas. Walking through each of those applications, first in the comprehensive plan amendment, we're asking the city to amend your plans future land use map to add those two areas, the five hundred and seventeen acres with the industrial designation and the seventy nine acres with planned community designation. Idaho law does require that land be included in your comprehensive plan in order for it to be annexed. We're requesting that industrial designation for the five hundred and seventeen acres uh, to be consistent with the contiguous campus um, and it's harmonious with the industrial zoning in the area. This amendment is supported by Blueprint Boise, which states that the industrial land designation is quote strongly encouraged within the Micron industrial areas. We are also asking for the seventy nine acres of Micron's property to be included in the land use map uh, with a planned community designation because it is adjacent to existing planned community designated lands. Turning to the second application for annexation and zoning, we're requesting to annex and zone that five hundred and seventeen acre area, uh, no permanent development is proposed at this time, but annexation will bring this area into the city limits and adjacent to the Micron Campus and with the zoning, all um, conditional allowed uses within the zone would be allowed to proceed, and so it will enable uh, future expansion of the campus. Our application was filed under the prior code at the time that this was called the T T two D zone and uh, that has now been re-categorized as the I three zone, but because of the timing of the application and all of the materials that are in the record we'll continue to call this the T two D zone at this time. The third application that's before you is the development agreement modification. Um, this does not seek to change material substantive provisions um, but rather make minor clarifications to integrate the new property and to add in the new property into the internal and peripheral designation. And here, of course, the scale is difficult because this is such a large area, but you can see um, the prior campus outlined in red and the new area to be annexed outlined in green. And finally, um, this isn't a specific application, of course, before you tonight, but as Delaney highlighted and as uh, Council Pro temp agent asked questions about, there is another process here that's part of the necessary sequence. Um, and so just wanted to walk through that a little bit too. Um, we are requesting that the city work with Ada County to renegotiate the area of impact boundary to be consistent with the Flume Expansion. Um, and this is because the current Boise Area of Impact Agreement that the city has with the county um, doesn't include these properties, and so in order to uh, be consistent with the agreement that the city will not annex land that is outside of your area of impact, negotiated area of impact boundary, we need to have you renegotiate that area. Um, and that way they just match, you're getting the area of impact boundary to match your comprehensive plan um, and it's consistent for both uh, the city and the county, then you both codify that new agreement into your codes. And so as Delaney um, described, that process has already been initiated uh, with the city making that request of the county, and they will go through their process to approve that. Um, but we're here before you to make sure that the annexation is approvable, to get your um, determination of that and then we won't record that annexation um, or the development agreement until the county process is complete. And that's all I have for you this evening, welcome, any questions you may have?
Yeah, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one, and it's more of a curiosity thing, these are parts of the property that Micron owns out there, it's the, the micro's actual ownership is bigger than uh, like that, that seventy, whatever it was acre parcel that's uh, why is it, is it the rest of it, yeah, there we go. Um, Micron's property is contiguous, but these requests are kind of, you know, there's a little island, is it because the rest of it's unusable or not planned to be used, or you know, why not just request all of your property?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council Pro temp agent, Micron does own additional lands that are already included within the comprehensive plan. And so uh, focusing, I guess, first on the comprehensive plan area, we only need to add these two properties of the remaining Micron property that's not already included in your comprehensive plan. Then focusing on the annexation, only one of those two new areas is contiguous to the city limits and the campus at this time, the new seventy nine acre piece is not contiguous even though there are other Micron lands um, that are available there. Um, this is the area that is um most appropriate for expansion and you can see that with the the site plan based on the location of the facilities and the planned expansion to the north. It's also the area that we're requesting an um, industrial designation on. Um, the planned community lands are not proposed for development as part of the campus at this time.
Got it. Um, yeah, thank you, it wasn't, it's not particularly material to the test we're supposed to apply, but I was, I was just curious, so thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, so you're good.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll open it up to the public, I don't have anybody signed up to testify, is there anyone here who's planning on testifying on this one? Going online? Um, I'm guessing the applicant doesn't have anything further and any more questions for staff at this point? Right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move approval of CPA twenty three zero 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 six and CAR twenty three zero 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 one three along with uh, also the amended development agreement to accommodate those approvals as discussed and the final caveat that council requests staff work with Ada County to adjust the area of impact.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Um, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude to Micron's continued investment in the city of Boise and look forward to more opportunities for us to be good partners with them um, in their investment in our city and our people and um, hopefully bringing some new homes and good jobs here.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, anything else? All right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next up is the, oh geez, the, is it Huga? Huga. Huga subdivision. S U B twenty-three dash eighteen. We've got a preliminary and final, a final plat. And we've got Matt here presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a preliminary and final plat for thirty-nine unit townhome subdivision with one common lot located at three, six, nine, eight East Warm Springs Avenue in a S P O one Harris Ranch specific plan zone. This application was previously heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We unanimously recommended approval via their consent agenda. The proposed subdivision complies with the dimensional standards and approval criteria of the development code, as well as within the Harris Ranch specific plan. The proposed, the proposal has received approvals from both the Harris Ranch Review Board and through a design review application. The proposal is situated within a densely populated residential area of Harris Ranch with adequate alternative transportation infrastructure in close proximity to the site, as well as within a mixed use area that will accommodate business growth as Harris Ranch continues to develop. The site is located in close proximity to Warm Springs and Parks and the Community Activity Center and incorporating higher density housing in activity centers with existing transit access to promote compact walkable development patterns is encouraged by the comprehensive plan. In conclusion, the the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the proposed subdivision.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? No questions. Do we have anyone here from the Neighborhood Association on this one? I have John Mooney listed, but I don't see. And anyone planning on testifying on this one? All right, with that, I don't know if the developer is in agreement with the staff report or if you have anything else that you'd like to add or if there's any questions for the developer.
Mr. Mayor. One, I had heard from John Mooney, and I know that there was one, it's not really a land use issue, but just one thing probably worth noting, once this gets down the line. I understand that this development is half in the CID and half outside of the CID. So I guess I was curious to see if there were, and it might not be from the development team, but what the plans were on like educating residents and as they're moving in to that format. It's a little confusing. But so I just wanted to say that on the record and hope that gets passed down if it's not in your wheelhouse from the developer.
Ian, did you have anything for that? Yeah, any staff comments on that? Good. All right, with that, go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of S U B twenty-three zero 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 one eight.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Maybe just note the things that councilmembers had brought up in their comments. Right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we've got item number three, C R twenty-three dash ten Boise River Builders. A rezon of approximately point three five acres from R two medium density residential to R three D multifamily residential with design review. I think we've got Sabrina.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I'm playing a little hopscotch tonight. I'm going to have to recuse myself from this item for my planning and setting work. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, thanks, Sabrina.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a request to rezone approximately point three five acres located at twelve hundred and twelve oh eight South Leadville Avenue from R two to R three D. The subject property is located southeastern corner of the intersection of Leadville Avenue and Beacon Street. It is designated as compact on the future land use map, which would not typically support R three zoning. However, the comprehensive plan states that parcels less than one and a half acres in size do not have to adhere to the land use designation if other policies of Blueprint Boise support the proposed use. As detailed in your packets, the proposed development is in compliance with multiple goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. At the Planning and Zoning Hearing, the Southeast Neighborhood Association opposed the rezon, claiming that it would constitute spot zoning. However, there is existing R three D zoning in the area, including the adjacent parcel to the west. Additionally, the rezon will allow the site to accommodate higher density residential development in close proximity to existing transit facilities designated bikeways and neighborhood services. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission found the proposed R three D zone to be the most appropriate for the site. If the rezon is approved, the applicant intends to construct two apartment buildings containing a total of ten units on the site. On August fourteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the associated P U D application, which was not appealed and is therefore not before the council this evening. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the rezon, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff on this one? I just, I guess I have one, one quick question, and I think you kind of outlined it a little bit. But if this was larger than one point five acres, then it wouldn't be appropriate. But if it's smaller, it would be, can you explain that to me just a little bit more?
Mr. Mayor, yes. So typically, to change the zoning to a zone that's not supported by the land use designation of the parcel, the applicant would also have to modify the comprehensive plan to reflect a change in future land use designation. The exception for parcels that are less than one and a half acres in size is just to acknowledge that there are some smaller parcels throughout the city where a change in zoning maybe does fit with the context of the neighborhood. And so that larger process isn't necessarily, you know, needed.
That's super helpful. Thank you. Um, good, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify that last comment, that exception is written into the comprehensive plan. In other words, the comprehensive plan directs that for parcels less than one point five, this is the role we will apply, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Agent, that's correct.
Thank you.
Great. Um, I don't know if Eric Berg is planning on, from Cina, is planning on testifying, not online, not here. Anybody in the audience here to testify on this one? And so I think we've got Todd Blackwell. Todd Blackwell, online, he's the developer. Online. All right, well, the developer isn't here early here either. So unless there's any further questions for staff, we can close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I move approval of C I R twenty-three zero 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 one zero.
Second.
Uh, motion and second. Any discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I think it does comp, obviously comply with comprehensive plan because it directs this density for smaller parcels. And as to the spot zoning issue, I agree with the staff that R three D is present in the area. And so it's, you know, consistent with that use as well.
Great, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great. All right, next we've got item number four, D R H twenty-three dash one two one. Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Denial of Certificate of Appropriateness.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, good.
I don't. Staff planning to talk about this? No. I move deferral of D R H twenty-three zero zero one two one until January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, because I understand that there's been an issue with the noticing on the site.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion needed? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, item number five, C R twenty-three dash fourteen. Rezon of approximately point seven one acres from R one A S single family residential with Sycamore overlay to R one B S single family residential with Sycamore overlay. And got Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a rezon of approximately zero point seven one acres located at three, one, zero, two North Sycamore Drive and an R one A S, single family residential, two point one units per acre with Sycamore overlay to R one B S, single family residential, four point eight units per acre with Sycamore overlay. This application was previously heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October second, two thousand twenty-three, who unanimously recommended approval. The property is located approximately four hundred feet northeast of the intersection of Sycamore Drive and State Street, which has been identified as a community activity center and a primary transportation oriented development station. The surrounding area is comprised of a mix of land uses with predominantly single, with some multifamily developments to the north, south and east, and a wide variety of commercial uses to the west adjacent to State Street. In summary, there are multiple goals and policies within the comprehensive plan, Sycamore Neighborhood Plan and Colston Neighborhood Plan that support the proposal. The proposed R one B S zone is consistent with the comprehensive plan as it designates the site as a suburban land use in which the R one B zone is allowed. The proposed zone is also consistent with the Sycamore Neighborhood Plan, which identifies low density residential development of four units per acre along the northern and southern perimeter of the overlay district adjacent to Catalpa Drive and Taft Street. The proposed rezon will not diminish the rural character of the neighborhood. Rather, the establishment of a transitional zoning designation between the transportation oriented development station with commercial uses from the west to the Sycamore Neighborhood to the east will further reinforce the semi-rural characteristic of the neighborhood by incorporating a gradual increase in density, lot sizes and intensity of land uses between the two. The proposed rezon is intended to accommodate the density and dimensional standards required for an additional lot to be created to the east of the existing home and will front onto Taft Street. The proposed density for this project would equate to approximately two point eight units per acre below the anticipated density denoted within the Sycamore Neighborhood Plan and below the allowed density of the R one B zone. Public comment was received expressing concern prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing regarding the development's impact on the Sycamore Neighborhood and traffic impacts onto State Street, onto, my apologies, Taft Street. The addition of one single family dwelling is not expected to create adverse impacts to either the traffic network or greater neighborhood. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the requested rezon.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Um, so can we go back to the slide that shows the Sycamore overlay? So I assume this darkened area where the subject property is and including the darkened area on the north and south side is that area that was mentioned as part of the Sycamore overlay that would allow this type of density?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nash, that's correct.
Okay, so as part of this rezon, we are not amending the Sycamore overlay, but that is kept intact. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Commission, Councilmember Nash, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Nash. Other questions for staff? We do have, I think, at least one person signed up to testify. So why don't we go ahead and have the, go through the normal order and have the applicant come up? Do we have Josh? Is it Havacost here? Thanks, Josh. And I don't think you'll need it, but you got up to ten minutes and just name an address first would be great.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Josh Havacost, address three, one, zero, two North Sycamore Drive. I live at the subject property. Matt did a great job of covering what I'm trying to do. The reason would just allow the existing large lot to be split into two for another single family home. So.
Great.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? All right, sounds good. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we couldn't hear you online. Could you give that one more quick shot and just pull the mic up a little bit closer? My bad.
Yep, round two. Josh Havacost, three, one, zero, two North Sycamore Drive. Live at the subject property and the existing home. This proposal is just a rezon, and we have a concurrent minor land division to split the lot into two basically in half, as was shown on one of Matt's slides. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Even better the second time. Good job.
Thanks.
I don't think we've got anyone from the Neighborhood Association, but I've got Jim Smith here. Come on up. Up, right up here would be great. And you've got three minutes and just start with name and address, please. All right, thanks, Jim.
So, Jim Smith, my address is thirty-four sixteen North Hawthorne Drive, Boise, eight three seven oh three. And I do live in the Sycamore Neighborhood. My concern is primarily that there will potentially be impact to my neighborhood in the future, simply because a precedent is being set. And our community of Sycamore has worked very hard for literally decades to keep what we have because we value the community. Has on many times met and tried to explain the value that we see in keeping our neighborhood as is. So we all have, at times, financial things that come along that say, boy, wouldn't it be great to monetize what I have? And the community as a whole said, no, even though those things come up from time to time, we're not going to do that. We're going to maintain the, the, the community that we have. And my concern is if we chip away at that at some point, it'll go away. I even have concern about the neighbor directly next to this property, who will be impacted by whatever is built there. They are important to me. Their lifestyle and what they've chosen is important to me because they're part of my community. They're not here tonight, but I've heard them say that they're concerned. What happens if whoever is in this property builds something really tall and I can't have my garden anymore? That's the kind of community we have, lots of gardeners, big animals and space. So that really sums up my concern. I apologize for my nervousness.
Jim, you're doing great.
Okay. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much for coming down. Appreciate it.
You bet.
I don't have anyone else signed up to testify. Is there anyone else here planning on testifying on this item tonight? Anybody online? Um, I don't know if the developer has anything they need to come up and present on again. I don't know. If you would, that would be great.
Uh, just to quickly address what Jim mentioned. At the neighborhood meeting for, excuse me, for this project, it was originally proposed to be three total lots. Some of the feedback was given that the neighborhood is important to everyone there, and we amended it to two, to just splitting a lot in half. So we were trying to make some accommodations for that. And it does meet kind of the Sycamore Neighborhood Plan that was developed in nineteen ninety-eight, which was the slide Matt showed with the shaded areas. So it, there are people in the neighborhood who disagree with it, but it actually is what the neighborhood said that they wanted back in nineteen ninety-eight, that level of density. So just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Josh. Any other questions for the applicant? Um, any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I move approval of C I R twenty-three zero 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 one four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
This is in a community activity center, and I agree with the staff that it's supported by all of the pertinent neighborhood plans. It's two point eight units an acre and the Sycamore Plan and Overlay directs up to four. So, you know, we'll, we'll approve what's before us, but I would like three, too. And I think it's important to understand that when we talk about neighbors, uh, hopefully those feelings include the new neighbors, too. The people who will get an opportunity to live in, in your beautiful and wonderful neighborhood. It, yeah, two point eight units per acre in the four units per acre area of the plan and that transition to State Street. I do think it's appropriate and separate from that, I think our code instructs us to approve it.
Any other comments?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
I would just second Councilmember Agent's comments. This is not in my council district, but it is in my legislative district. And I've gotten a lot of feedback about how folks there are very protective of the overlay that exists there. I would just point out that there was, part of that was to protect the rural character of that area. Anybody who's familiar with the neighborhood understands that it has not been rural for some time. But people really like the lots that they have, and they want to protect that since this is consistent with that overlay. I would be open with to a development that is consistent with the neighborhood plan. If that is three, three units, I would be open to that as well. So since it is consistent with that plan, I'll be voting in support.
Right, and I'll just, you know, quick comment here. I think the important thing to remember is that this does still continue to have the Sycamore overlay. And that really is because it's an amazing area. It's an amazing part of town. It's very unique. And I do think that this is something that can add value and allow somebody else to be part of that really, really unique neighborhood. And I think it's important that it does keep that overlay. And I thank you, Councilmember Nash, for clarifying and making sure that that, that was included and that doesn't go away. Um, with that, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sed.
Us.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Next up, we're going to keep. Next up, we're going to keep, keep moving through. We've got item number six, CAR. Why don't we actually, why don't we take a quick break and then we can get through the rest of our items together? Let's take a break and we can get through. I think we got three more. Let's do, let's do eight minutes. All right, it has been exactly eight minutes, so let's go ahead and get going again. Set my timer. Next up is item number six, CAR 23-15. Boise Airport rezoned of approximately 125 acres from M1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial. And we've got Sabrina presenting again. Thank you, Sabrina.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. See, not sure why the slides aren't showing. There we go. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you is a request to rezone approximately 125 acres located at 220 West Gowron Road from M1 to M2. The subject property is located within the boundaries of the airport master plan area and the surrounding area is primarily comprised of other properties that are owned and operated by the Boise Airport with some other industrial uses also located in the vicinity. Multiple goals of the comprehensive plan support the requested rezone to M2, which will allow for airport related development and will accommodate the expansion of airport operations over time. The Planning and Zoning Commission found the proposed M2 zone to be the most appropriate for the site as the land use map designates site as airport and industrial. And the rezone will serve the public interest by supporting the operations of the Boise Airport. If the rezone is approved, the applicant intends to construct a fuel farm associated with the airport on the subject property. On October 9th, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the associated CUP, which was not appealed and is therefore not before the council this evening. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the rezone and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, so you're good to go. Also with staff is our actual applicant for the city of Boise, Amy Schneider. Anything in addition to add? Nope, I don't have anyone sign up for this. Anyone online? All right, unless there's any more questions for staff, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move approval of CAR 230001.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Henny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, now we've got item number seven, film permit fees.
Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to jump in here. I'm impressed that we hit, well, for me, it's seven now, whatever time it is there, one hour. As I'd hope to join for these things, I've got to head out, but I did want to say, just as this is opening, that I appreciate the work that staff has done on this. Former council president Holly Woodings and her work on this. And then the engagement we've had from the community related to the film ordinance. So thanks for running a great meeting. Good to see you all. I'll be home. I leave tonight, so see you all soon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the good work over there. We move fast because we only do eight minute bathroom breaks instead of 10 minute bathroom breaks.
I was impressed. I'm going to have, I'm going to have to take that tack of maybe setting an alarm on my watch to better manage the breaks because you just set a great example.
Good to see you. Safe travels.
Bye, everybody.
All right, go ahead.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great to be here this evening. For the record, Andrea Cantor, Economic Development Advisor for the city of Boise. I'm here today just to present on filmography and the associated film permit project we've been working on. Specifically, I hope to provide an overview of the coordinated work that's been done and outline kind of the next steps for this film ordinance. First, I just want to note this project has been supported by staff from Arts and History, Mayor's Office, DFA, and Legal to help deliver on a revised film permit ordinance and permit fee schedule with a lot of our industry stakeholders. Also, just want to thank Joan Carter Hansen for joining us from the Idaho Press Club this evening in the back of the room. So part of this work kind of stems from the film community wanting more resources to be dedicated to growing the film industry, both at the city and state level. Currently, the city nor the state offer incentives or staff exclusively focused on film. And for context, there are other cities and states that have chosen to offer resources like tax incentives.
Just one second, we dropped the screen.
Film office.
All right, here we go.
To attract film projects. A main goal with this project is to have a film permit that encourages commercial activity and economic development by creating a simple permit to help us better understand kind of the size, scope, and needs of this industry. We see this permit as a first step in building kind of the infrastructure for this part of our creative economy and hope to help advocate for future resources. The film permit ordinance will provide guidance on when a permit is needed and the type based on tier of impact for commercial filming on public property unless otherwise exempt. There are four different permit tiers outlined in this ordinance that range from low to high impact. Each with a different set of parameters. I do want to note that the exemptions include news media, student films, contest films, which we heard were an important component of this policy. And that should not be regulated to not hinder creativity and free speech.
Andrew, real quick, just in case there's any confusion, I think when we sent something out earlier today, we had accidentally not included the most updated one that included news media. The one that's actually in our council packet does in fact include news media as far as an exemption. So if that's something that people are watching or here in the audience are concerned about, please reflect the one that's actually in the council packet that does exempt news media. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. All right, here's a brief overview of the outreach completed over the last year or so with about 50 film industry stakeholders. During this time, we received valuable input, which was used to make substantial changes to the film ordinance, which was last in front of council in 2022. The box in blue shows where we are today. On tonight's agenda, there is a public hearing for the film permit fee schedule and the film permit ordinance is on the reading calendar. For the public hearing on the film permit fee schedule, what we're talking about this evening, this relates to the high impact with special events team permit tier. All the other permit fees have been previously approved by council as shown kind of on this, this box. This permit tier and permit fee highlighted in yellow was added to create a permit to streamline the review process for large and complex films. And will allow applicants to present to the city's special event committee, which we think will make things a little easier. Once the film permit ordinance and associated fee schedule are approved by council, which we hope will be this evening. Next steps are for staff to implement this new permit into our systems and workflow, which will likely be completed by November 2024. In addition, staff plan to put together outreach and education materials, which we feel are equally important to the success of this effort. Lastly, once the film permit is fully implemented and active for at least six months, we anticipate doing a project check in to review permit data, get user feedback, and see what changes might be needed at that time. In closing, I just want to thank all the folks that have been engaged in this effort. We've been really impressed when we've had meetings or outreach, just the number of folks that have been engaged in this. And with that, just thank you and happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions for staff? Maybe just one quick comment. This has been a long time in the making. I can't remember Councilmember Willetts and Bajin when we originally heard this in work session a year ago, maybe longer, two years ago. So I appreciate all the work that's been done with this. I want to talk specifically about this. I think it makes so much sense to have people go through the special events committee. As somebody who's organized events before and sat in a room that has every single one of your, your EMS, your trash collection, like all the different folks in the room at the same time. I think it's going to be such a great process for folks to be able to go through and be able to streamline and get everything done quickly. You know, with a fair fee that's associated with it as well.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I do have a comment. I, I also, I recognize this was a big lift for staff, but I think it's a great step. You know, to not just the economic impact, of course, of the permits, but when communities are welcoming to film projects, you can also see huge influx of economic development through the crews that they bring with them that stay in your community for sometimes months at a time. And certainly the crew that hire locally, that all has a really big impact on our community. So thanks for the work on this.
Yeah, and just reiterating that I think it's a, it's a good fee. It's a fair fee. I think it's something that people will be able to work with. And I think it's directly reflective of the process that folks will go through in the city staff involvement. It is a public hearing tonight. We are hearing it on the fees. And so we do have one person signed up here to testify. And Joan, on your way up, I don't know if we have any folks online. I see there, there's people there. If you are, if you would like to testify, please raise your hand and we'll, we'll call you in. Go ahead, Joan.
Hi, my name is Joan Cartan Hansen. My address is 610 West Warren Street. I'm a producer for Idaho Public Television. I sit on the Idaho Press Club's First Amendment Committee. I'm also on the National Committee for the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Our interest primarily was to protect the news organizations and appreciate so much the staff recognizing the importance of the First Amendment and the right of the free press not to be licensed. We also are encouraging our, see the encouragement for our fellow producers, especially in the film community. So we're excited that there will be data collected to help get that community the extra push that it needs. We did have one concern that is really more of an implementation issue and something the council should probably be aware of is it's difficult to prove a negative. So if I'm out filming with a crew, I'm exempt as a news or journalistic or nonprofit, take your pick. But if someone, if a policeman comes by to ask, where is my permit? I don't have to have one, but how do I prove the negative that I don't have to have one? So it's a, it's an issue we run into at Idaho Public Television with the Forest Service all the time. We're not allowed, we don't have to have a permit, but then we're, they guess, well, where's your permit? Well, we don't have to have it. Well, you still have your filming, I guess, but we don't have to have a permit. So we have, we actually carry the law, a copy of the law with us to provide it to the people who are trying to understand why we're trying to film in outdoor Idaho in Idaho's public lands. So the same would hold true here. It would be, it's important that the council and the staff be aware of the implementation of as you start asking police officers to enforce this.
So much, Joan. I think you might have a question.
I mean, I was just a comment. I, it struck me that the only thing worse than being chilled by an oppressive law would be to be chilled by the absence of a law. So I find that ironic and unfortunate, and we will certainly have conversations here.
Other questions? I just one quick question. Do you have any recommendations for addressing that?
For how to enforce it?
How to address it, yeah, without having?
No, actually, I think it's something that we, part of it is, is the process you would go to enforce any kind of permit and following through in that process. But it's a tough, it's a tough question for police officers who are, or the ones who are going to have to enforce the permits on how they have to figure out who it is and who it isn't. I think fortunately, by far and away, most people who film in this, in the city of Boise are news people. So I think it'll be obvious, very obvious if it's not a news crew, you know, but just by the fact that most news crews now are down to one person, maybe two people. So almost all, all of the impact you'll find will be on that low tier. So in the most part, it's not, it's just, it's, as I said, it's difficult to prove a negative. So.
Thank you, Joan. I just assumed everybody had a special badge that they would like flip open in their wall and be like, all right, you're good to go.
No, there's a whole, there's a whole set of laws about requiring press to have permits or having news people have permits.
Well, we appreciate you coming down and your involvement in this process. Thanks for the work.
And again, I would thank the staff. I've been working on this with them since 22. So it's, they've been, they've done a marvelous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Did we have anybody who raised their hands online? All right, last call in here. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor. I would just love a response to that particular issue, if that's been discussed, and if so, if there are ways in which you're planning to address it. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henny Keith, it's not something that we've addressed so far, but we do plan as part of our implementation as we work with the clerks and the legal team of how we will implement it. Typically, it's kind of our compliance officers that will kind of help us with this permit implementation and, and how do we regulate that? So it will likely be something similar to how we manage other permits, but not something we've sorted out yet. So we'll take that back to staff and, and make sure to address that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One thought along those lines that might be sort of constructive, it's not that the person doing the filming is the press. It's that the filming taking place is press or journalism. So for example, our most recent commenter could go film a commercial even though she's the press, and that would be subject to a permit. On the flip side, Toyota can come and decide to do some reporting and that is journalism or press. And so the training or direction we give officers, apart from registering all journalists, which I think would be very opposed, would be that it's, it's the, you know, it's the actual transaction taking place in front of the officer. Is it press activity or is it commercial or something else? And it's not, as opposed to, for example, the status of the person doing the filming or, you know, this person is a journalist, whatever. It's the actual activity taking place. So that might be a starting point for how we educate our team.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I think we're actually looking to read this tonight for the first time.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Usually we ask unanimous consent on first reading, but this is a little different, so I'm going to do it with a motion and therefore I move that ORD 4423 be read by number and title only and then filed for the second reading calendar.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I would just say.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Sorry, Councilmember Willetts. Yeah, I would just say I would be in support of some type of, I won't say permit, but affirmative exemption indicator for those engaged in exempt activities. So I would ask staff to look into how we could provide that type of remedy.
Thanks, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Reiterate some of the things that have already been said, but just to, to just echo, I know this has been a long road. In fact, as I looked upon this, this row here, only three of us were here when we started this conversation. So that just tells you how long we've been talking about this. And I know that there was such an outpouring of folks, not only from the film community, but from the press community and to get this at the right place and to get us someplace to start. And, you know, one of the reasons we would have this conversation is because we really didn't want car crashes being filmed in the city of Boise without us knowing it for commercials and high speed chases and, and, you know, the effect that that could have and has had. So just a, a big shout out to all of those who got involved to let their voice be heard and to make this the best that it can be. A common theme that I'm hearing tonight is what I'm calling review and report. We've had a, you know, the zoning code is a big lift. This is a lift. And I think it's, it's where we start and where we look at how are things, how things are working and then we are able to review. And but you, you can't review if you don't have a place to start. So I'm anxious to see how this actually works and how we can make it better. And just thanks for everything. This took a long time. So thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'm good. Or clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Henny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-44-23, an ordinance enacting a new chapter 20 to Title III Boise City Code entitled Film Permits. Under such new chapter, providing a legal authority, purpose, and scope for film permits. Setting forth that the general licensing provisions are applicable, providing definitions, setting forth when film permits are required and the exemptions they're from. Setting forth requirements for exempt slash non-commercial filming activities and prohibiting filming without a permit if one is required. Providing application standards, requirements, and ongoing duty. Setting forth the fees, surety bond, perm, term, and non-transferability film permits. Providing for the administration, application, review, and conditions, and requests for permit changes. Requiring the code of conduct, requiring applicants follow liability provision requirements. Setting forth permit denial, suspension, and revocation review procedures and reasons. And providing violations and penalty provisions, approving and severing the ordinance and providing effective date.
All right, and now we're going to have the item we removed from the consent agenda. SEB 23-24, when an item is pulled, when a subdivision is pulled off the consent agenda, we, we read it as a full public hearing. So we'll go ahead and do the staff presentation. Richard, just good to see you. Are you presenting for the Neighborhood Association or as an individual?
As a neighborhood association.
Okay, alright, so we'll give you some time to present as the Neighborhood Association. And then we'll open it up to see if there's anyone else here. We don't have anybody signed up so far, but if people are signed up or would like to testify online, they can go ahead and raise their hands now. Sabrina, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. One last time, I'm sorry to have to recuse from this item for the work I did on planning and zoning.
Sounds good, and you probably get to go home after this one, it's the last one. Alright.
Alright.
Sabrina, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a request for approval of the final plat of the second phase of prominence subdivision. On October tenth, twenty twenty-three, city council adopted revised reason statements for the rezone, PUD and preliminary subdivision plat associated with the subject development. Therefore, satisfying the requirements of the Idaho Supreme Court decision, which was issued earlier this year. Notice of the adoption of the revised reason statements was sent to the applicant and the registered neighborhood association on October thirteenth. The final plat that is before you this evening is comprised of forty buildable and eleven common lots on nine point three-one acres and an R one C D A zone. The final plat is in conformance with the layout and design of the preliminary plat and the requirements of the development agreement for the property. Public opposition has been received from the Northwest Neighborhood Association and a neighbor of the site as detailed in your packets and summarized on this slide. However, as discussed previously, the requirements of the Idaho Supreme Court have been satisfied and the proposed final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat and the development agreement, which have received previous approvals from city council. Additionally, many of the neighborhood associations' concerns are related to required improvements that are located outside of the boundaries of the phase of the subdivision that's before you this evening and will instead be provided through future phases. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the final plat and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for the staff on this one? Alright, thank you, Sabrina. Kent Brown, we're going to give you ten minutes. You'll have a chance to come up again at the end, so you can talk all you want now or you can talk a little bit later.
I'll be really brief, for the record, Kent Brown, thirty-one sixty-one, East Springwood. As Sabrina mentioned, we're in, final plats, when they come to you, they're, they've already received an approval and it's just checking to make sure that it's drawn and proposed as approved. The neighborhood associations ask questions about things that are actually taking place, except for those that are, are not within the boundaries of this particular phase. When you approve a subdivision, unless the development agreement specifically calls that certain things need to be at certain phases or at certain thresholds, those, those items don't go in. There, so the items that were, are in question, we're either doing or that they're in another phase. And I can speak specifically to those if those questions come up and we'll go from there. I know you've been here a while, so, thank you.
Sounds good, and we'll call you up again here at the end if there's anything else that you'd like to say.
Thanks.
And then we got Richard Loewen, Richard, it's good to see you in person. Yep.
It's very in line with our perception.
Hey, Richard, we're giving you ten minutes as well.
Great, thank you, Richard Loewen, ninety-one seventy Hill Road. These are comments from Northwest Neighbor Association and we're to get board approval for them. Okay, so let me just stop here at the beginning. I don't think anything, because I'm going to say, you know, we're not going to discuss the Supreme Court. Yes, apparently we were notified. So I don't think any of these things that we're going to say are controversial. I think all of them have been approved one way or another by city council in the past or ACHD. Our question is, when are they going to happen? How can we ensure that they happen in a timely manner? Especially considering that there were three phases at the beginning. Phase one was everything to the north of Hill Road Parkway. Phase three then came ahead of phase two, that confused us, which was the multifamily component, and we heard that last spring. And there was some issue about a pathway, an east-west pathway along the Spoons Banks Canal. That, which was, I think, confusing for many of us. And now we're talking about phase two, but there are no other phases. So in light of what we just heard from the applicant, it's confusing to us to know when these requirements will be fulfilled when we're talking about phases and we have three phases and this is the final phase, and I'm quite sure of this at this point, this is the final plat and the final time we will see phase two of phase one, two and three before us. So that's, that's where we're coming from. Again, I don't think any of this is, is controversial. But it'll be for you, if you kind of look out there in the distance, you can see Hill Road Parkway and then these lands are farther there across Hill Road Parkway, again, phase two. What we're concerned about especially is the ACHD requirement for phase two for a signalled pedestrian crossing of Hill Road Parkway. The general plan that we had, that we developed with city council back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen for connectivity from State Street to the foothills, a completion in a timely manner of a sidewalk on the south side of the Hill Road Parkway. And then again, that top ten Boise Pathways segment, which is an east-west connection. So we're talking about two different connections, north-south and east-west. And that was a top ten Boise Pathways segment in the new Boise Pathways Plan. So first of all, I think probably the thing that concerns people first and foremost is this phase two signalized pedestrian crossing of Hill Road Parkway. So ACHD did require that, they said it was required on Duncan Lane, this is the, one of two of them. And they said at phase two, so, you know, you, I guess that's one of the confusing parts to us. You know, one of the big new things in our neighborhood is that the landfill, you know, I, I serve on the southwest Ada County, or sorry, the, the south, the, uh, the Ada County, the solid waste Ada County, SW, same acronym, solid waste Ada County Public Commission Board. And, you know, six, seven years ago, we were still considering that the Ada County landfill would be going for eighty, ninety years. It's now down to half of that or less. And most of the new solid waste is coming from western Ada County. That's coming through our neighborhood, primarily in these large semi trucks, for fifty tons. And they come along Hill Road Parkway. And that was kind of one of the main reasons that we convinced ACHD that these were, these signalized pedestrian crossways were necessary. That hasn't changed, it's only gotten worse. Now we're creating a new cell up at the landfill, that's a huge deal, I hope you're aware of. So into the foreseeable future, we're going to have more and more and more of these trucks. They're big, they move fast. So it was quite clear, in my, by my reading at least, that the ACHD requirements, they said install high, a pedestrian hybrid beacon as part of the southern portion of the project phase two, okay? Again, what is phase two, where this is phase two, is this phase two? Yes, it is phase two. But we don't see anything, you know, we look at the plat, there's no demarcation of this hybrid beacon. You know, this kind of safety infrastructure, the sooner you get it in, the better, right? The more likely we are to save lives with it. And there are, you know, there are concerns, it's probably not germane to this, my presentation, because it's already been a requirement. But, you know, with these commercial truck drivers, I think that's probably the best situation for having these signalized pedestrian crossings. They drive the same route, you know, ten times a day. They're more likely going to be kind of watching for these signals than the random, you know, driver who's just in a hurry and maybe careless and not paying attention. You know, we always are concerned about luring people out into, into the roadway, you know, where there's, there's really, where it's not safe. But I think in this case, it's probably the best case to, to use these. So this needs to be front and center before occupancy. So when? It's not on the final plat now, or at least I don't think it's on the final plat. If you, if the staff knows about these things, it's on the plat that I am not aware of, please, you know, say so. I'm not, we're not trying to play gotcha here, we're just trying to ensure that this actually happens. Spoons Bank Canal Eagle Drain, it's, has its own native trout fisheries, we've talked about before. Okay, so the north-south, yeah, my slides are out of order. The north-south connectivity here is supposed to go, the whole idea is from State Street up to the foothills, Veterans Park Trailway, which that hybrid pedestrian crossing will be part of. We don't know where that's going to be yet. So it's a little hard to understand, how will the trail on the west, southwestern border there connect with the hybrid pedestrian beacon? How will that work? How will it be market, be marketed on the plat? Because we don't know the location of the other one. Right now, we don't see any kind of connectivity up to that. Again, we're not aware of future prominent phases. Yes, phase two can be expanded, but that's, I believe, technically part of phase two. There is supposed to be an easement over the Spoons Bank Canal required for the development agreement. We don't see that on the plat, it says it shall be depicted on the plat, we don't see it on the plat. Maybe it is there somewhere, I mean, honestly, we're just trying to ensure that this happens. But we do see in the language of the easement, it would appear to actually prevent a pathway over the canal. It's, it's not listed there in those four items. And it says no other construction or activity is permitted within or affecting the drain of the district's easement. So it would look like, not only is it not, it's not on the plat, it's not specified in the easement, but it would look like the easement excludes that connectivity, that north-south connectivity as part of the development agreement. Again, irrigation lateral number thirty-four, that was a big bill. It's important for aquifer recharge, wildlife, general aesthetics. You know, it's a really, you know, these things have flowed my entire life, you know, a hundred and fifty years in this neighborhood. That was supposed to remain open, part of a development agreement. It's kind of a modern way of daylighting water when we can. You know, it's not open anymore, that's, you can see it kind of there on the right side, back before the development. On the south side, yes, it's hard. You can see there in the little inset, that's one of the Swenson's hawks, they used to fly up from Argentina. They used to be there every spring, it's too bad, they're not there anymore. Those trees were cut down along the irrigation lateral, looks like that now, it's not, it's all buried. And that's unfortunate, and this was part of the development agreement. And now it just seems to have disappeared and we don't know, you know, nobody seems to be enforcing it. I was surprised, one of the things I learned from the modern zoning rewrite was how many neighborhoods found that these kinds of development agreements, especially for pathways, would just simply seem to disappear. And that's what's happening here. I mean, okay, they're probably not going to undo that, but maybe we can mitigate it. Maybe we could at least say explicitly acknowledge the fact that it's not being followed in some way. And perhaps that could help restore, mitigate some of that ecological damage. So again, lateral thirty-four, the development agreement. Agency comments on Boise Parks and Recreation, class three trees. That's what they're hoping for, maybe that could be a mitigation, it could be done, right? Easier than re-dataing what they just did.
Time.
Alright.
And Richard, I'll let you wrap things up here if you got one more sentence.
I bet, yeah, I had a conclusion sign, I appreciate. So conclusions, the signalized pedestrian crossing, it's required by ACHD for phase two. That's part of the requirement conditions, the Boise. I've included those. And so in general, how does phase two, this is phase two, when will that happen? As well as the sidewalks, et cetera. Ensure that the top ten private Boise pathway meets the standards, apparently this is the time to do it. And I, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, I mean frankly. And then consider mitigation for failure to meet the DA requirement to keep lateral number thirty-four open. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah.
And the applicant, if you want to come back up and if there's anything that you'd like to respond to, wonderful. Unless there was any questions, I don't know that there was for, okay.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor Hallie Burton. And council, Ms. Mortensen, can you pull up that slide that shows phase two with the future and current improvements? Thank you. So we'll be quick, just respond to Mr. Loewen's comments. And, and again, at a high level, I'll reiterate what Mr. Brown said. The developer in this case is not contesting any prior conditions of approval that were otherwise imposed in twenty nineteen. We fully expect to comply with all of those conditions and put them in during the phase that otherwise includes that improvement. This slide is very instructive, I'll try to point some things out as I go through. So, sorry to kind of back up here again, but phasing, phasing is kind of confusing in this project. If you go back to twenty nineteen, prominence was a contested project, it went through several iterations. But when it was first brought forward, it was two phases. It was north of Hill Road Parkway and south, south of Hill, Hill Road Parkway. So south of Hill Road Parkway was part two. And as part of that PUD application, there was a traffic impact study for a project of this size. And it, again, broke the project into two phases. ACHD's analysis of this project was north of Hill Road Parkway and south of Hill Road Parkway. So in ACHD's staff report where they talk about improvements being due as part of phase two, that is the whole southern portion of prominence, so everything's south of Hill Road Parkway. And they're not super specific on when that second beacon is due, but it says during the development of phase two. So this is the first of many homes in phase two, so we don't believe this is the appropriate time for the beacon. We think the appropriate time is part of phase four, which would be the last phase, which is adjacent to Bogart, where that's, that beacon will ultimately be. So a lot, a lot of background there, if there are questions, happy to answer them. But so, so that's the response with respect to the beacon, so that'll be part of phase four, the final phase. The north-south connection, that is another condition of approval from the original PUD. This is a great illustration of that. You can see the phase two project, which we're here for tonight. And just to the west of that, you can see a, a future green line that shows the, the bulk of that north-south pathway and ultimately the bridge that the city's hoping to have crossing the Spoons Bank Canal. So again, the bulk of that pathway will be shown as part of the phase four plat. But if you look at our landscape plans, there is a small portion of that pathway included in the project tonight as well.
Well, can, can we pause the clock over there? I've got one just quick clarification. I remember going through this part of the process, I don't think that we ever required you all to keep the north-south connection of that canal open. But we certainly won't be covering Spoons Bank Canal with the pathway, Spoons Bank Canal will remain open.
Yeah, Mayor Hallie Burton, great question. So one of the council's conditions was that the developer not pipe lateral thirty-four. The developer has not piped lateral thirty-four. Boise District Number Two decided that they wanted their facility to be piped. And they did that on their own accord, and there's really nothing that we could do about that. It is their facility to sort of adjust however they see fit.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you, that, that was one of my last points on the class three trees. Parks did provide a comment letter that recommended that. The conditions of approval tonight impose the, the conditions from Parks Department. So I believe that is a condition that is, that is with phase two, that the class three trees be used. They commended, I believe. Uh, they commended, I believe was the word that they used, the number of trees in the project. Um. Lastly, Spoons Bank Canal, that was the second part of your question. Again, developer has no intent of, of piping that. Um, as you can see, uh, maybe go back one slide, sorry, Sabrina, if you could. Um, we're constructing the green portion of that multi-use pathway with phase two. And then the extension to the west will be part of phase four. I believe that covers all the comments from. The Northwest Neighborhood Association, but I'm happy to answer any more questions if there are any.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, any questions for the applicant?
Um, I have a question, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, it's my understanding that we put a rule into the new zoning code, uh, regarding. Um, that development agreement requirement shall be satisfied within one year of the certificate of occupancy being issued. And I'm, my question for the applicant is if we believe that standard might be met. Um, here, even though the new zoning code does not apply to this particular application.
Uh, Mayor Halliburton, uh, Councilmember Nash. I'm not familiar with that section of the new code yet, I'm sure I will be soon. But I fully suspect that all of the conditions of approval related to site improvements. Will be complete within one year of the final phase, so phase four.
Thank you.
And I, it, there was one more note, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it's material here, but as it, as it relates to A C H D's conditions. That the city otherwise imposes, i- it is a bit duplicative. Um, Idaho law does require all plats to go before A C H D for approval, including this one. And phase four ultimately, and so they're also double checking their conditions to make sure the transportation conditions are being met.
Any other questions for applicant? Um, all right, you're good to go.
All right, thank you.
Um, any additional questions for, for staff? Or unless you wanted to take up the last, yep, go for it. Got fifty-six, fifty-six seconds. Plus, I'll let you do a, a good run on sentence, because we let Richard do it as well.
So the, there was a question about the, uh, pavers, the, the pay, pavers will be in the, uh, multifamily portion. Um, A C H D does allow pavers in some cases. Uh, I've done, been lucky enough to do a couple of those projects and. It's kind of difficult i- in public streets and the requirements, but we can, we're meeting that, that there. Basically, the covered ditch, uh, for the lateral thirty-four. Was an impossible condition to meet, and it's not the first time in thirty-four years of me doing this, that.
You're referring to the north-south.
Right, the north-south connection that, uh, th- they were concerned about being tiled and they talked about the mitigation to it. When. You deal with a ditch company, you have to do just like we have to do with the city and the highway district and everywhere else. We have to do their conditions. The ditch company decides how they want to maintain their facilities. And they didn't want that to be open, and, uh, they had adjacent landowners asking for the same thing, so.
Right, thank you.
We did it, yeah.
Thank you. I ruined my, uh, eight-minute bathroom break by allowing people to go two minutes over on their testimony, so we just canceled that time right out. Um, any other questions for, for staff? Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, um, I would like to better understand the traffic concern. And when that comes into play with the light. Could you help us out there?
Uh, Mister Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I can try to. Um, so it's the pedestrian hybrid beacon that you're questioning. Yeah, so that would be located, um, further west of where this current. Phase of the subdivision is, um, and would be, you know, constructed at the time that that future plat comes in for the remainder of the townhomes. And that, what the developer is calling phase four.
Mister Mayor.
Good.
So follow up, so I just want to make sure that I understand that you're verifying essentially what the developer said, which is that, that. A C H D will not put that light in until the subdivision is built out.
Mister Mayor, Councilmember, I can't speak towards A C H D's timing requirements. Um, I would imagine that could be true, as there would be no sidewalk connecting to that hybrid beacon. Until that future phase comes in as well.
And then, Mister Mayor, can you help educate us? So when something like this goes through and the. The subdivision is completed. What is the trigger for A C H D to actually do it? Like, how do they know that, okay, it's time?
Uh, Mister Mayor, Councilmember, all future subdivision plat applications will be routed to A C H D. So they would be aware of that at the time that it's submitted. And know that it was the appropriate time to install that improvement.
Yeah, I can maybe just add something real quick there. Typically, when you'd be putting in the sidewalks. Um, the final landscaping for the sidewalks is probably when you would align them with intersection at the same time. So it usually kind of depends on when subdivision is, is getting finished in that particular area, um, next to the light.
One more question, so we're.
Going all, all the questions.
Well, so we're trusting that they'll do this.
Mister Mayor, Councilmember, that's a condition that's recorded in the development agreement. Is something that the city has the ability to require at the appropriate phase.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Um, all right, no other questions, go ahead and close the public hearing. Entertained a motion.
Uh, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move approval of S U B twenty-three zero 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 two four.
Second.
Got a motion in, in a second. Um, any discussion? Richard, you might want to stick around for discussion. All right.
Mister Mayor, the, uh, the requirements of the Supreme Court have been satisfied. That's point number one. Um. Many of the concerns that were raised were really questions, but they pertain to things outside the boundaries of this application. I'm not even sure we could legally require them on this application. They're off-site in that sense. Um, but at any rate, they'll be considered when the following phases and applications come forward. Uh, as to this application, the proposed and drawn. Plan that we were given is the one that we've already approved, and so, uh, we should be consistent and approve this as well.
Any other comments?
Um, I would just add. Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Uh, I would just add, I would like to see the. Um, conditions, the development agreement approved or implemented in a timely manner. So, um, as those faces come up, I want to make sure that we're doing that in accordance with that development agreement and, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Um, a couple of things, or just one thing I may add, I agree with everything Council, um, protest agent said. And I don't think that there's anything that legally would allow us to say, do this faster now. Um, my comment would be, do it as fast as you can. Um, if there's the ability to. Look at that pedestrian crossing, if it was there today, it'd be used today. If the sidewalk was there today, be used today. Um, so if we can do things faster, let's do things faster and prioritize that, but I don't think that we're in any position where we can require you to do that. And you're doing everything that you need to be doing, um, so appreciate you coming back in. Um, if there's no other comments, we will call the roll. Quickly, please call the roll.
Agent.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash. Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn. Mister Mayor, I move adjourn.
Second.
Uh, clerkly, please call the roll.
Agent.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Hanny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Um, thank you, everybody, for coming down.